And in the valley of Houghtain, I am in the National Assembly. Thank you so much for coming for this important thing.
Amandla! Amandla! Hey, it's fighters, hey, ta! Hey, it's fighters, hey, ta! Awu yumshaba, awu ye! Awu yumshaba, awu ye! Ikamalame, ngushengi wemkalipi, gimember of the EFF and the Member of the Parliament of the National Assembly.
Molweni, PCM! Molweni, PCM! Ikamalame, dingutshembingosiwa kwa pleni, ndilulungu le EFF, l'parlement, ANCOP, kusekaya kaba.
Amandla! Amandla! Tata EFF, tata! Tata EFF, tata! Ikamalame, bingu zoleka, oto i, ndila pugule njiowi somte, twayase Eastern Cape, apo amalungu abetwa yo EFF ngayi overall, tata! Amandla! Amandla! Maawu yumshaba, maawu ye? Tata EFF, tata! Diasbulise la namu, dungupindiwe kaba, di councila pa e Bafalo City, yaabunye.
Eh, molweni, manbulise kui komite saka cha, eh, chonge ne, no wubu iswa, komshaba, eh, ngonga pani, ni kokpata. Ikamalame, dingumaanlaxai, eh, ndilulungu l'parliamente pa ekapa, kulalshu ibizo wa by National Council of Provinces, ngos.
Amandla! Amandla! Tata EFF, tata! Nage, dingumamzo, wa la pa e Bafalo City, ueme li chabe, ndilulungu, lapaya e bugen, wa maswala, ngos.
Thank you very much. Eh, my name is Sbongani Bongo. I am a leader of the delegation on the section twenty-five of this leg. I am a member of the National Assembly. I'm a chairperson of the portfolio committee on home affairs in the, in Kaptown. Now, thank you for the introduction, members. We are on now item number three. We are an ad hoc committee of parliament. The members that are here, it's a committee that has been set by the Speaker of Parliament and the National Assembly. It is ad hoc because it's a temporary committee. It is set temporarily to deal with amendment of section twenty-five of the Constitution. The lifespan of this committee is going to be the end of May. That means, by the end of May, we must give a report to the National Assembly about the work that we have done. The chairperson of the committee is Dr. Matolemo Tsaka. He is in Houghtain today. We have, as a committee, decided to split into two, so that we can crisscross the country in a more effective and efficient manner, to get as far as possible the views of our people on the subject matter. We have been in the Eastern Cape since Thursday with the same process. We are here today at King Williamstown. Tomorrow, we are going to EBI. I should say this, that the members of the committee are quite happy with the deliberations so far on how the process is running. We have been sent here for a specific reason. This reason that we have been sent here for started in 2018. In 2018, it was the fifth parliament of the Republic of South Africa. A similar committee was set. Some had the same faces, some are not the same faces. A similar committee was set. It was set to go to our people as part, as of participa- public participation process, to ask about the desirability of changing or otherwise of section twenty-five of the Constitution. This is a requirement by law, that whenever you temper with a section in the Bill of Rights, that is in chapter two, you've got to check with your people, particularly the desirability of changing the section. So they came specifically for the section twenty-five. What was found, the report which came back to parliament, was that majority of the people of South Africa wants section twenty-five to be amended. Then that business was closed. This committee is set to further the work that was done by the fifth parliament. So the sixth parliament is now tasked with a simple but difficult mandate. The mandate that you are now here for, as well all over around the country, is the drafting of section twenty-five. Having concluded on the desirability, which majority of our people said you need to change section twenty-five. Section twenty-five is the property clause in the Constitution. So the sixth parliament, now the speaker, has tasked this team to look at the drafting of section twenty-five. What does that mean? It means the concentration that you must do today is to look at section twenty-five and its subsections and see which ones needs to be changed to make sure that we address the issues of inequality, poverty, and unemployment in this country. So it is a very important, very important subject matter. So it is required that we run this process in a proper and indeed a dignified way. Because as we got into this process in 2018, there are other people who are strongly opposed to this process. If you don't run it in a legislative and a legal way, we're going to end up in the courts of law, end up losing the whole objective that you want to set. So we are required to do this process in a legislative and in a legally compliant way. And so that whoever watches the deliberation must say the deliberations were legally compliant. So that is why we are here, that is why we are making sure that the process runs as smooth as possible. Take note that this is not a public or a mass meeting. It is a meeting where these members of parliament were here. They are not going to be saying anything except listening to the views that comes from yourselves. They will be listening, jotting down notes. So we do have what we call interpretation services. But these interpretation services mainly is to make sure that members who may not be either Kosa speaking or any other language speaking, when we use English, is that they must be able to get to know exactly and precisely what was said in the meeting. I, for one, I speak in the valley and Swati fluently. So if you speak in Kosa, some things may run, I may interpret them differently. My friend here speaks Ilobedu. It's a, it's a language that is in the Northern Province, in Limpopo. So it is important, the reason why there is an English interpretation is that members here must take the message very clear back to the, to the National Assembly, which this is what the people in King Williamstown have said. So it may be very, very important that you understand why the issue of the interpretation is, is brought here. We are not only the members that are here, we have our colleagues on the other side. Some amongst them are researchers, some amongst them are legislative drafters, some are land expropriation without compensation practitioners, some are support staff to make sure that this work, whenever we go to court, whenever we are required to go to court and present what we have done in the interest of our people, we are able to defend any dispute that is, is legal. So I'm trying to appeal also with you that you understand the process. So as we deal with this process, we are guided strictly by the Constitution of the Republic. We are also guided by the legislations of parliament. We are also guided by the rules of parliament, which we have also brought. So these proceedings are running strictly like a committee of parliament. The difference is that we came to the people as part of our public participation process, which is required by the law in terms of the Constitution. I think that is why, I think we need to get that preamble very clear as to why exactly we are here. So I am requesting all of you to participate in the process. What is important? More often, people were telling me that knowledge is power. But if knowledge is not organized, it ceases to be power, it gets to be something else. As a result, I think organization is power than any other thing. So if we are better organized, we may achieve the things that are desired, particularly in favor of the majority of the people of this country. So the process, this process, and take note that this process is followed by many people. The whole nation is looking at this process, how it unfolds. Majority of poor people have a belief in this process, that if we land expropriate without compensation, their lives may change for the better. So I'm appealing to everyone who's going to be talking, to make sure that whatever you say, it is properly captured and it is properly said. But now that we are running a parliament process, we have about three hours to run this process. So every speaker that will be speaking will be afforded three minutes to summarize his views about the drafting and the changing of section twenty-five. And we hope and request that we will get your cooperation in this regard. We hope and request that you'll make your views very clear and well known. I have not now got an indication of the traditional leaders that are here because wherever we go, we seek also to respect the establishment of traditional leadership. We, if there is traditional leadership, please let the table know that we now have the traditional leadership. Jengen Joyelo, we would also give them some time to express their views on behalf of their subject. We went to the first place, when we went, the traditional leader, they expressed clearly to us that land was economy and economy is, is land. And we were quite delighted as members, as we were interacting with the traditional leadership. So whenever they come, please let us know that they're here. So, but the process today is to listen to yourself, to, to your good self, to take notes, so, and to have the camera capturing in a technological way what is being said in this part of the country. So the way would proceed is going to be as follows. I'm going to be noting, I see there are three sets, three sets of segments. I will take ten this side, ten this side, and ten this side. As a first batch. Then we will then see how we proceed going forward. Once we have noted the first ten, you will be required to sit here and the mic is just in front of you, then you start saying your views on the drafting of section twenty-five of the Constitution. The ten that I will note this side will sit here, so that we get better organized. So that we get better organized and get clear on the business of this day. So I am starting now to, to note hands. Okay, let's put the hands down. Can we have the translator translating what I have said?
Eh, ushala loke wale komite, u advocate Bongo, uye wa khasu kutige apa ke komite etu kyaana lesibo napamku etu, eti ya thongwa ke ngusomlo moe paramente u speaker, injongo zayo ke kuka ba izi apa namshange uza uzama utakisazona ke ngale ngombo nka zolo inde singe na kuyo. Le komite ke komite o tu kyaana eti ya kulungwa ngamalungu e paramente awatshuka shukeneyo, asuka ke mi butho ngemi butu ya shuka shukeneyo. Lamalungu ke ya ne komite, ngi komite asebenza kuzo ispeina. Kotwa ke usomlo mu ye owa kweka nganye nganye, wa wa tata wa wa sisa kule komite, bo ma ba wazo kuensha le komite etu kyaana ezau tiyona, ikube ke ke ikube ikabe zele, umsebezi wa ukalwe e paramente, kotwa e fifth parliament, e paramente eshtanu ko twenty eighteen, magestate ke ngala fifth parliament, e fifth parliament ko twenty eighteen, ya inekwe umsebezi woku tumai chigelezi elilomzans Africa, ya hamba ikangela iluvu lulu ndu ukuba ulu ndu ulunga, bo na ali bo ni kufanele kilena, ukuba umshati ukanyi kandelo le twenty, le twenty-five kumka koseko, le ngashonyeluwa na ukuzi le kaulesi se ingubu yokuwizela omshaba e banduin. Ela solo ya twenty-five, linazo ingubu elinazo zo wizela omshaba e banduin. Kotwa ke ezingubu ingati se ya kota, azikaulesi singo shobo ekulindele ke ngalo, nenzele umba omshaba ochisi bu nzingalo. Kungogo ke la komite, ikubekwa e CRC, Constitutional Review Committee, ko twenty eighteen eti ya chigeleza, omzans Africa, kwa ongi amapondo ikangela izi mvozulu ndu ukuba ulu ndu ulunga itebisanzani na, ukuba mshambi umka koseko, ikandelo twenty-five le ngashonyeluwa, kufakelewe ina ueti ma utatwa omshaba ngapandla kumbuya kesu. Kanya twenty eighteen ke ulu ndu ekaku chigelezi kabi akulo lapinda la buye, la nikla ikobaesa e komite layo bo ma yaambi e paramente, yo utasukudu tinasi lulu ndu city, e section twenty-five ma ga shonyeluwe. Ya ifu ma ki paramente ya ipumeza lonba e section twenty-five ma ga shonyeluwe. Ye ya pe la ki e paramente eshtanu ye lula ke kwakala e sixth parliament. E sixth parliament ke ye ya thongwa ke ngukule atwa komite, ukuba ma ikube ke ke ngalamsebezi ye la kunya, la li ya ilinekwe e paramente ko twenty eighteen ye ba ma kshonyelu e section twenty-five. Le komite ke ilapa yenza ke ngukulomsebezi, na ni ifumelewa ko twenty eighteen, ukuba ma isomelewa e section twenty-five. Umsebezi ushoma la ngukuluswenzayo. Ko twenty eighteen sasteli mvume, ngalononyaka sia shomele. Ma ikatenje kakshelonda u, basenza oko kshomela sasi vunyeluwa ngako ko twenty eighteen bo maswenzio. Ko twenty eighteen saska shomeli, sastela nje mvume. Si inekua ke kukona ke ngukusenza la nduasasineke impume yayo, yo shomela. Kungogo ke ngukiparamente izi apa, le parla, le komite ke i atwa komite ushala wayo ngukri sauma u matolemo Tsaka, ye na ke o ushala wai eto komite o te wa bonu kutle komite ma yo shule kubini. Omnyo umlenzo le komite usheka utinshtetanjee wenzalo umsebezi, u keshama tholemo Tsaka ulapo ke. Lon umlenze utunyeluwa pimpa kolo ni, ukokelewa ke ingato ke Bongo, ubama kuso kuensha lo umsebezi ushomela. Si la pa ke ngoso utela inge biso zenu, uba ezishomeluwa kasi paluama si palu enjani na, na to indesele yona, ivume sasi inekwe ko twenty eighteen, ngokusela inge biso zenu, ba kasi shomela ma si spali enjani ezishomelu. Si zele lonu je kupela namshange. Kungogo ke ushala ekte lu kuti masnwe te sinyamezela ne, ibaleka kakulundwa ma sinyamezela ne. Si ngosuka ngosukeneyo, si kuli ngomesa shukenepa pani, kotwa kasi sisa kumba omshaba, melba shuli ngomenyi. Basonge omshaba si tima awu ye, imelbi nyengwa me si kula ke kula kumba kupela. Kungogo ke stelu kuti masnwe te sinyamezela ne, ukuba ke lenkubo ya namshange ipuma kuma bonaku ude, ipuma kui tv life namshange. Kunto teta, kuso be fe la kula tv ya se paramente o four eight. Kaku la pa, kungogo kubalekulu masnyamezela ne, umduka eteta ma kaniwe ilungelulake ma kate tu uluvoluake ulu ungenzelela yake. Anga kwa, anga kungapa za niswa indetwa yake, kuba umchin esinayo apa kmelezekele ikola tholezona ke ikalelo le utilinzun, umdu ngamni apa kule galimina namshange. Kuba kani kumbula, gala nyaka twenty eighteen kasi si kubalenkubo, ezibakona ukanyi imi buto kanya ma kela atile, awa ye ipiki sa nduwa umka koseko ma ushonyeluwe. Alwa kwa induwa omshaba ma ubuiso le ngapandla kumbuya kesu. Ka ke ngukusi kubalenkubo funa silungselele uba kabe sisa zukunlin abo ba ndu, si kwa zi ukuzi defender, si kunse, ngukunseke sukuti yonke indo ye etu, yenze ke ngokwa ngo, gentelele fanele kleyo, ngestima ne stwa zela. Kunga twabe kukwa, kwa be kunga tuki alala apa, ubonakale u indela esu obalu le ke ngayo kuti, ba ndu abala apa indiwa yomshaba. Ba indiwa omshaba si tati la phezu. Lon do sa ibona jani, ngoba na kala sa ukuzi misela, noksoni pa na kaumnye esenza ikalelo. Le komite ke itunyewa ke ngelo kunya e paramente bo ma izi ulunduini, uba ke elnyela ma kunya e paramente, ukuba kabi kuso kuensha ishomeluwa isholo ya sato ko twenty-two kumka koseko e Bill of Rights eti. Kaku zukensha ishomeluwa umka koseko, ma e paramente i kwa zu esenza ishomelinga kange izi ilunduini. Uzo fumana ulu ndu ilniku ulu ndu litatinga klayba, ko, ko, ko so ishomeluwa uzo esenza. Kungogo ke si la pa si klo ngubu yu ba si zuk nika ulu ndu ituba, baba nu tatinga klayba, sia kela ke wa nani nitatinga klayba, genzele fanele kleyo, enesima ne stwa zela. Ukensha lamgomshala ngomchomnye na kausbuwa napaa uzi ne, genzele ote wa zpatanga yu kulindibano. Na bani abantu abakuwa te wangekoe apa, ba nomshala ga lomba su peze. Lon shala, obalu le ke, lomba, lomba obalu le ke kakulu kuti sonke, kungogo ke kugunyanzele kilo kutu maszela u nyamezela ne. Le ngubu ke, yon tlangani sozulu ndu yosukile, kuntu tlangani sozulu ndu, yon ngubu ya se paramente, elaula imi tetwa ya se paramente. Yo ngogo umdola pa ngapagati, uyawa ngiyanzela kathobele lon mitetwa e paramente. Imitetwa se paramente ke ya ma ngeklaesho. I umsekele ule tlangani soa ezau tata i awara ez ndatu. Uchukuti ke umdu ngamni kaya teta pa uzo ba ne klaesho assekele ulewa ne, misuzi mitatu ukumbulu kuti, kusako seva kwakona ye, funake inuke ituba, loba ma kagaalele enze oluake uluvu. Kungogo ke sisa ekte lu kuti masnyamezela ne, si kumbulu kuti ke kasi la pa namshange la mulunge paramente la pa wazu teta ndu, okwa wokuzo mamela kupela. Ka emamela ke azo tata izi mvozenu abu yele na se paramente. Jenbe zele apa ke la malungu e paramente ainga wo onga seva ekstros. Umsekele ushala wae tutesindebele, omnyo utetimulubetu ilumezinja lo. Ukuzi ba kwa zi ukuzi va imiyalezo yenu ne kalelo lenu, kmelezekele kuti nde ikalelo lenu kukulewa ezingisi. Ukuzi kabe uyale paramente, ba uyale e paramente, be tetale ndu ne tetayo, be ife kaku shaba, ubanga bitetwa ekstrosa. Umdo zo kukulela, ibani yaya ke inga kuswa ekstrosa, ingondu inaki kanvi posu lumkona. Ukuzi, aywa be kakuze ma isue kolulu ime alikawa ndayo nalva kakuze. Ka ikuba ke lenkubo ushala ke uzo utatesa ndezilshumi kitala ngalinye, kwele kala, abo ba ndatu wa bakthonga wazu ushala kutu zutu znapambili. Apin ndatatesa zilshumi kwele kala, abo ba ndabakthonge le wazu ushala kutu zutu, ya ba mchigulu kala loyo. Yipin mchigulu landla ya akonbe inanlabantu. Singa eti ke sinyamezela ne, ka umdu eteta pa ma kaniwe ituba loba ma kaze, ubu ngbani kamalake usuka pina, angene mkhuluwa inanga kwekulezi, ukensha le ekshal ngamchi. Ya uchwa ba kukindwe zele yo globu yitu za ete, tonga, e ngakangu ete, uenyenge seklabo kesu e parawayo, ukensha la kunga sheke na anye ikalelo lomdo funulez, ingos.
Thank you very much. Can I see the hands?
Si kala kwele kala, ma zimel kala, kala ngab.
One?
Ka unekwe numbero pakama kus znapambili.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. The next one is this. Okoke, yeah. Season other. One?
Isa znapambili kau konji we wa nukue number?
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Si abu ya kala.
Sisa za kwele kala.
Sizo bu ya, we'll come back this side. You can start.
Good morning Chair, my name is Counselor Daya. I'm the chief whip of the Democratic Alliance here in Buffalo City. I'm also a resident here in King Williamstown. First, let me start off by saying that we do believe that the land issue is a problem and it needs to be sorted. We do recognize our brutal past and that bad things have happened. We had cities over here and we had the majority of population over there being denied access to healthcare, to education, to things that could make their life better. However, we stand before you having an incredible constitution that gives you the tools and the power to fix these situations. We certainly don't believe the constitution needs to be changed. We feel however that the problem is an incapable state. Corruption, cadia, deployment, lack of accountability, these issues can be fixed. Chair, it's the equivalent of buying a car and not serving, servicing it for three years. When the car breaks down, you don't have to sell the car, you can just fix the problems. In the Western Cape where the DA is running, we've achieved seventy-two percent agricultural land reform. So if the DA can do it in the Western Cape, it's possible that the ANC government can do it in the rest of the country. Ultimately, Mr. Chair, we believe that if this constitutional change is mandated, uncertainty will arise in our economy. If you look at the coronavirus and what's happening here, imagine what this will happen in our country. So to conclude, Mr. Chair, we believe that this will not create jobs, it will not provide homes, it will not stop corruption. We're not asking you not to fix the problem, but we're asking you to fix it in a different way. Thank you.
You can go back to your seat. Thank you, can start?
Thank you, Chairperson. The name is Luthalo Jello, DA Councilor, Bafalo City Municipality. Let me start by saying that the bill seeks to amend to provide that where land and the improvements on it are expropriated for purposes of land reform. It further states the amount of compensation may be needed. It does not actually specify the circumstances where no compensation may be given. It also states that a separate legislation must be set out of the specific circumstances where a court may determine the amount of compensation is needed. We feel that the bill is problematic on this basis. We are not clear on what the bill defines land and what is property as these two are inseparable. The amendment referred to land in our understanding is that land is not only agricultural land, but it includes communal and urban property, etc. So we feel that the land concept is not clearly defined in the amendment. Section twenty-five four B states that property is not only limited to land and in the amendment, the process includes any form of land. In a country faced with corruption like ours, the bill seeks to give all the powers to the executive. Now, our concern is that who will who will keep the corrupt executive in checks when we are doing this process? We believe that people must have property rights and that title deals be given on property. We oppose the proposal that the corrupt executive or national legislation determine the conditions under which expropriation can be done without compensation. I thank you.
I thank you. My name is Bongile Aloni. I'm from BCM from ward forty-six. Firstly, we are surprised that you are here again as a parliament. Because on twenty eighteen we were here and we gave you a mandate. But anyway, we will continue from scratch. Number one, number one, the section twenty-five of the constitution must be amended and read as follows. The state including parliament, executive, judiciary carry an obligation to redress the imbalances of the past through enactment of laws that will achieve redress and equitable retribute all resources. Section twenty-five subsection two must read as follows. Property may be expropriated without compensation. That is subsection twenty-five, I mean section twenty-five subsection two A, only in terms of the law of general application or public purposes or in public interest. We want to remove section twenty-three subsection three and replace with the following. The state should be the custodian of the South Africa's natural resources inclusive of land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualize state custodian of natural resources. Thank you.
Ika malam du ngupaga misa sakata, diswa kumaspa lombaga wase Buffalo City, kwa ward sixteen. I parlamenti eslan konyaka twenty eighteen ngo July ya ilap. Sasileli parlamenti ndoba maya ambe, yu chinchumtet. Ingakumbi omxati wesu melisbini elislan we constitution. Sio tuka ngo kaspinda sbo li parlamenti lap. Sitige ngogo lushobutin, i parlamenti skete liklayesh. Ikrita nemali zaba half. Sitige ngo ukuba seleni lap. Ma sepe indesenzis paragamis. City o section twenty-five ma uchinju. This is o section twenty-five, sitala uchinjake ufunde ngolsho. Isika basoka. Uchulumende maka lungi maka lungi ise ungalingan kwa bandu Msansafrika. Isika basesbini omxaba ma uku twa nga pani ngubuyekezo. Isika bases tatu. Sifuna sona sichinju esifunde ngolsho. Omxab izinbiwa na manzi. Zonke ma sbepansi kuesandla skakuulumende. Ukwenzela indoba uchulumende azabe ngokulingana yu kummiwonke wa la pe South Africa. Isika bases kren. Sifuna sona sichinju singabiko. Ngos.
I am paragamisa sakata from BCM. Parliament was here in twenty eighteen in July where we mandated to go and amend section twenty-five. We are now surprised that you are here, you came back again. To us, this is just a waste of time and the taxpayers' money. But now that you are here, we propose the following amendments. That section twenty-five must be amended. Subsection one must read as follow. The state must carry the obligation of redressing the imbalances of the past by enacting laws to achieve that. Subsection two, land must be expropriated without compensation. Subsection three must be removed and be replaced with the following. The state should be the custodian of all natural resources, the land, waters and the minerals. And subsection seven must be totally removed. Thank you.
Ika malam ngosukiswa no ya ke, dipuma kwa ward forty-six apa klomaspa la ombatwa wase BCM. I parlamenti ibila apa ngo twenty eighteen July. Sio tuka indoba nanga ba namplange nipindi nibela apa kwa kona. Sisifakile izpaga miso. Kuitayshalo be elitotele yo. Situ omxaba ma obuyele ebantu inba ba nga pani ngubuyekezo. Kuchinju omxati wesitatu. Okoku kubena omxati wesitren. Ma uchinju nao, uchulumende au laule ngo kuake, zonke izindo sishomxaba obuyele ebantu inbao. Ngos.
I'm zukisambi ya ke here Buffalo City. In July twenty eighteen, parliament was here and we mandated you to go back and amend section twenty-five. We made our input then that you should go and amend section twenty-five. But now that you are here, we will give you the following amendment. That section twenty-five must be amended. That land must be expropriated without compensation. And the government should also be the custodian of all mineral resources, waters and land, everything in it. That is our input.
Ika malam du nomawe tunyatela disuke ward thirteen, Buffalo City municipality. In twenty eighteen, parliament was here and we made submission. We told you to go and change the law so that we can appropriate land without compensation. Isoti niapa. Because indonienzayi nitala genmali setex indonienzayo. Since iseni lapa, this is our submission. Section twenty-five of constitution must be amended to read as follows. Number one, the state including parliament, executive and judiciary carry an obligation to redress imbalances of the past through enactment of law that we achieve redress and equitable redistribute all resources. Number two, property may be appropriated without compensation. Section A, only in terms of law of general application or public purpose or in public interest. Remove section three and replace, the state should be custodian of South African natural resources inclusive of land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualize state and custodianship of natural resources. I thank you.
Ngoska kulu Chapason. Ika malam du umzyanda kasheki iso, shalawa ward thirty-nine ape Buffalo City. Sixteen fifty-two, ufiga kaya nfaranripika pe South Africa. That is when our problems sakala call. In twenty eighteen, in twenty eighteen, the parliament be nilapa. Sasfaka ke izpaga miso kuba nilapa. Again nipide na buya kotoa asisuti. Nakani pina ne buya for the third time. Saopinda stetelendiwa nbesitetile last year that we want omxaba wa South Africa expropriate without compensation. Now, o section seven of the Nazi constitution, section twenty-five. Siakela ne ususe ne utata ne ulashleku. Thank you very much.
I am zyanda asheki iso. In sixteen fifty-two, when Yanfandripika arrived in South Africa, that's when this whole land problem started. In twenty eighteen, you were here. We made our submissions then and gave you a mandate. But we are back again. We won't get tired. Even if you can come for the third time, we'll repeat the same submission. That section twenty-five of the constitution must be amended. Subsection seven must be repealed, totally repealed. And subsection one, that the state should carry the obligation to redress the imbalances of the past. Subsection two, that the land must be expropriated without compensation. Subsection three, that the state should be the custodian of all natural resources including land, mines and ocean. Thank you.
Mulwen, ika malam du ngakon apartment dishalaka ward mulwen, ika malam du ngakon apartment dishalaka ward twenty-four ape Buffalo City Metropolitan. Go twenty eighteen i parlamenti ya ilap, sazifaka is kala zo zetu. Sitala kwa sifunani ambe nukchinja uchutwe i parlamenti. Ukwenzela sizo kuazo kutata omxaba wetu nga pani ngubuyekezo. Sio tuka kani lapa. Yonibonasa kuba nimwacha italali etu nijani mali abaha. Koba kutala sithesea ufuna omxaba wetu. Isobopelelo zetu esifunayo, esifunayo kwa osection twenty-five afunde kenkulu shobo. Isika basokaala. Uchulumende, uchulumende unezobopelelo, zogulungiisa, ugunalingani kwa nga pambili. Ngokuti enze umtetu. Uzo kwenza sikua zo kutata omxaba nga pani ngubuyekezo. Sifu. Ngalu kola ngani pina di kalelo section twenty-one. Ngalu kola ngani pina di mka kalelo kwa unifunu section twenty-five afunde kenjani. Kaya esu kini. Isika basokaala. Uchulumende, unezobopelelo zogulungiisa. Ugunalingani kwa nga pambili. Ngokwenza imitetwa zogulungiisa, ugunikezelo kameveliso, zomxaba ngo kulingana yo. Isika basosibini, omxaba izinbiwa amanzi, ma zinikezelo ya banu nga pani ngubuyekezo. Osection three maka susu afunde kenkulu shobo. Uchulumende, maka chonga ne omxaba ne mveliso zomxaba. Okonditi, amanzi omxaba ne zinbiwa, konukuse wonke uba wa la pe Msansi Afrika tumbling ngoklingana yo. Ngos.
I am Akon apartment from ward twenty-four. Yes, in twenty eighteen, you were here, but we see you back even now. We don't know why are you here. To us, you are just wasting our time and the taxpayers' money. Because in twenty eighteen, we made our proposals clear that we need land to be, section twenty-five must be amended, that it should read as, that it should make it possible for the land to be given to the people after being appropriated. Subsection one should read as follow. The state should carry the obligation of addressing, redress the imbalances of the past by enacting laws or legislation to redress those imbalances so that land can be given back to people without compensation. Subsection one, subsection two, that land must be expropriated without compensation and be given and shared among the people equally. And subsection three, that the state should be the custodian of all the natural resources, land, the minerals and the ocean. And that should be given to the people and shared among themselves equally.
Mulwen inonge. Ika malam du ngusonge zawa kongunkuini. Ward fifteen ipa e Buffalo City. Ayon na nondezauza kuyonga manja kubana, osection twenty-five maka chinju. Ukuchinju kwa ke konukuse wonke ummiwa sa South Africa. Nga kumba bamba nyama babene access klomxaba okanyala ngo ntshebe skanyala ngabo to. Eliliso, liliso le kusingama Afrika. So kengo kuka pinda pinda. Amakabano kanya abaye mi base South Africa apa be sithini apinda. Ukusa apa, banyansile indoniso yenzo niamba i honeymoon. Goba niya sinno uba tinasi funa omxaba, obuyele banduin, nixti masomtwa nyama, sikshokwa na ben omxaba. Kotoa ninanisensi kaifo xinga sisi tutu. Nixti masetu sikoma daldumxaba ma obuyele bandu na banyama. Asikangi lonjo. Goba lonjo na iposa ninaba kokelela, kwen negotiations zekote asa. Nashtangi isa, omxaba obiko, upila omxabo ofno kajtoitoy. Upila omxabo ofno kampagota. Si afuna lamxaba, magoya, asitangi lonjo.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Let, can I speak now? Can I speak? I had requested something from you. And I take it that you you accepted the request. There are two things I've requested. One was that singa kulume lpezulu. Two, the speaker said that kuluma ngrinistraun. And I said, there is a camera that is taking the record. So if you slap their hands akuluma, it may not take what is required and said. It will take their hands. So as much as we get happy, but what is most important for this process is to get the views transmitted to parliament. So that these members who are going to debate this matter must debate. The debate will be on the basis of what you say, not on the basis of the slap. That is why I said it's not a mass meeting. It's not a talk show. We're speaking to members. Members must take the report back. So that will be important that we listen as far as possible. It's my request and I thought we agreed. So can we please adhere to what I've requested you to do? Asome plif. Proceed.
I'm Songe Zongunkuini from the Buffalo City. This section twenty-five must be amended in a way that will make it possible for the black people to possess land and also benefit to the land the same way the white people also benefit. You should not waste our time. As I heard from the previous speakers that were here in twenty eighteen, indeed you are wasting time by coming to us. You are selling us out like you did during the Corteza negotiations. You promised that you are going to bring us land, but you did not bring us land out of the Corteza negotiations. Please do not waste our time. Let us get our land back. You coming here back is just wasting your time because you are just having a honeymoon instead of expropriating land and give it back to us.
Thank you. Mandipotise na. My name is Paragamisa Matikizela. A student at World Tasse Sulu University. I'm residing in ward twenty-four ape Buffalo City. It seems like ifani okunindoba ninyuka nisela genmali zaba zalbet, who worked so hard for them, nisseben siselindoba ningatinisa indopateka. Now, this is what we want and it's been said before and we are going to say it again to you. We want section five of the constitution to be amended and to read as follows. The state including the parliament that you are from, executive and judiciary carry an obligation to redress imbalances of the past. Enact laws that will achieve redress and equitable retribute on resources. Property must be expropriated without compensation only in terms of law of general application or a public purpose or in the public interest. Not the interest of someone who don't know who they come from. We are the natives of this land, not the people who came those years who don't know. Remove section three and replace it Remove section three and replace it with this, with this kind of statement. The state should be a custodian of South Africa's natural resources. Inclusive of land, mineral resources, water and relevant legislation should be passed on to the clearly, to the clearly define and contextualize state custodianship of natural resources. And please do us a favor, maybe it might not be the favor in the near future, and remove section seven. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Chair, ndungubongaani Jonase, or ward councilor, Apa Akon, ward thirty-nine, with ANC. Chair. Chair, we appreciate for you to be here. That shows really, the government led by the ANC is taking this issue of land very serious. Chair, for the ANC, land reform is about redressing historical injustices and dispossession of black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth and promote socio-economic transformation. The ANC's land reform program provides a sustainable but radical way to address the land question. The ANC will use land reform program to build productive assets for our people, unlock agricultural productivity, secure food security and address the persisting reality and apartheid special separation. Our submission, chair, one, we submit that the section twenty-five clauses one, four, five, six and nine should remain as they are. Number two, chair, on clause two, we make the following amendments. Add a new sub clause two C, which was read as, which read as follows. Subsection two, without compensation or near compensation under conditions laid out in a law of general application. Number three, on clause three, we make the following amendment. At the start of the clause, which now reads as follows. Where compensation is payable, the amount of the compensation and the time and the manner of payment must be just and equitable, reflecting on equitable balance between the public interest and the interest of those affected, having regard to all relevant circumstances, including A, the current use of property, the history of the acquisition and use of property. Three, the market value of the property. Four, the extended direct status investment and subsidy in the acquisition and the political submission. Improving of the property. Number five, the purpose of expropriation. Number four, chair, on clause seven, we make the following submission. For that, the purpose of this hearing, the text remains as is and the clause should be revisited as soon as possible in a later and separate phase of the land reform process.
Time is up, next speaker.
Mulweni, ikamalam ndung pila, pila sanemaduans. I'm coming from ward twenty-four in Sabriti, Tanzania, Pafalo City Metropolitan Municipality. Indeed, in 2018, you did come here and you have asked that you must submit what you wanted, the citizen of this metro. However, we are being surprised because we are subject to a position where we might not know why we're here again, but we are going to do more submissions so that we can do here at this time. We hope for the best. Now, section twenty-five of the constitution must be amended and to read as follows. Number one, the state, including parliament, executive, judiciary, carry an obligation to redress the imbalances of the past through the enactment of laws that will achieve redress and equitable redistribution of all resources. Number two, in that subsection of twenty-five, the property must be, may be expropriated without compensation, only in terms of the law of general application or a public purpose or in the public interest. Number three, that subsection number three in section twenty-five must be removed by the, it must also be replaced with the following. The state should be the custodian of South Africa's natural resources, inclusive of the land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualize state custodianship of natural resources. Uh, subsection seven, may please be removed completely, it does not help anyone. Through the exploration of land, at least we hope that our forefathers were killed. This land was taken through black genocide. They were killed, even up to this far, they have not got justice on their grave. At least if you get to expropriate land without compensation, we'll get to know that now, they will get to rest in peace, they will turn to the right side of their graves. Thank you very much.
My name is Jabu Somtata. First, I must make it clear that EFF will never stand and watch our land being bought back from the invaders, the intruders, the murderers and the thieves. We will never stand and watch by money being wasted to buy the land that was stolen in the first place. You came in 2018, we made our submissions. Since you are here, you didn't do the mandate that we had given you. We won't be tired, we'll make again the very same submissions. We'll rather have this be a song of the day. Number one, the state, including parliament, executive and judiciary, carry an obligation to redress imbalances of the past through enactment of laws that will achieve redress and equitably redistribute all resources. Number two, property may be expropriated without compensation, only in terms of law of general application or a public purpose or in the public interest. Again, we have to remove section three and replace it with, it read as follows. The state should be the custodian of South Africa's natural resources, inclusive of land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualize state custodianship of natural resources. I thank you.
Uh, ngosislalo. Man kala abasalalo, nitela, oku, unga nde, man kalo nde, man kaksensa kalinholo. Gobandi, kapel ndoba ingati noko, unga nditalelitiile. Ntingutoli le ikama, ndingoka sitzili, ndipuma Apapafalo City ward twenty-four. Guktoli le kasi zili ikama, ndipuma apa Apapafalo City Metropolitan Municipality. Ipalemende kengo 2018, I remember ngo chulaya yai lap, sa zifak is pakamiso. But inamdiyo tuuka, I'm very surprised, ndoba nipinde nibuye. Itiato go tigenisala, ngaklachali, tuakotwa, getina sizo tinwa. Sizo apinda, sizo submite, sipinde, sifunyala, yu glomshaba. O section twenty-five, where constitution of South Africa, sifuna chinchwe. For expropriation of land without compensation. Number two, sifunu section three. Sifunu section three, achinge. Ukhulume nde, ibenguye, opati laulolo umshaba, nezimbiwa namanzi. Sifunu khulume nde, ibenguye, kospatasongezo, sintukwenzela, bakwazu, ukuwaba, ngukulingana yu. O subsection seven, the constitution, sifuna susuena yu completely. Thank you very much.
I'm Kolile Sittin from Pafalo City. Yes, in July 2018, I remember very clearly that you were here. We made our proposals and submissions on that day and that we want section twenty-five be amended, that the land must be expropriated and given to the people equally. And that subsection two, that the land must be expropriated without compensation. And subsection three should be removed and be replaced as follows. The state or the government should be the custodian of all natural resources, including land, the waters and the mineral resources. And that should be expropriated and be shared among the people equally.
My name is Yangatringash, ward twelve, APCM. As my colleague said, Berilapa, on 2018, as committee of parliament, we did give you a mandate to go out and we told you that you go out and change the law so that it can, we can expropriate land without compensation, I guess. Um, as a committee, you are slot full. It shows that and in my class, I always tell my kids that listening, it's a skill. I guess you guys, you do not listen as much as you are literate. Um, section twenty-five of the constitution must be amended to read as follows. The state, including parliament, executive and judiciary, carry an obligation to redress imbalances of the past through enactment of laws that will achieve redress and equality, and equitably redistribute all resources. Property must be expropriated without compensation, only in terms of law of general application or a public purpose or a public interest. Remove section three and replace with the following. The state should be custodian of South Africa's natural resources, inclusive of land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualize state custodianship and natural resources. Dabong.
Mulweni, my name is Welo Abenda. My name is Welo Abenda, I'm a student at World Tassusulu University, I'm residing in ward twenty-four. Uh, in 2018, the parliament was here and we made submission. We told you that you must go and change the law so that you can expropriate the land without compensation. Why are you here? Because you are wasting our time and also you are wasting the taxpayers' money. But nonetheless, since you are here, we will board ourselves and do our submissions again. We are saying subsection, or section twenty-five of the constitution must be amended and read as follows. Number one, the state, including parliament, executive and judiciaries, carry an obligation to redress the imbalances of the past through enactment of laws that will achieve redress and equitable redistribution of all resources. Number two, property may be expropriated without compensation. A, only in terms of law of general application. B, or in public purposes or in the public interest. And also remove subsection three and replace it with this statement. The state should be the custodian, should be the custodian of South Africa's natural resources, inclusive land of mineral, mineral resources and water and relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualize state custodianship of natural resources. And also remove subsection seven, thank you.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Assi Wemanimpiezege, residing in ward twenty-four, Pafalo City Municipality. In 2018, the parliament was here and we made our submissions. We told you to go and amend the constitution so that we can expropriate land without compensation. Now, I don't get why you are here again, because I want to believe that you are wasting the taxpayers' money. In your sense, you are saying that before, you just wanted to know if the citizens of South Africa, they agree to the policy that has been put in motion, which is land expropriation without compensation. Now you are coming again, you are saying you need help on how are you going to draft it. But I believe also that there was a political party which raised the motion in parliament. So if you are having a problem with drafting it, perhaps you should go to the political party that raised the motion in parliament. So you are also again with that wasting our time and wasting the taxpayers' money. Now, I will also help you again, since I'm one of these members that made or rather submitted the motion in parliament. One, the state, including the parliament, the executive, the judiciary, they should be the ones who are looking carefully for the natural resources of South Africa, inclusive of land, mineral resources and also water in South Africa. And the relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and conceptualize state custodianship of natural resources. Also, please do make the point that you remove subsection seven. On point number two, the property may be expropriated without compensation, only in terms of law of general applications or in the public purpose or in the public interest. I thank you.
Chair, my name is Sivwizi Wengeete, from ward thirty-seven here in the Pafalo City. Chair, would you agree with me that all of you sitting there are landless because you are African? Now, why are you insulting our intelligence by even entertaining the word compensation? You are all sitting there landless because the settler Europeans stole your forefathers' land through the barrel of a gun. And you come here and expect us to glorify theft and talk about the word compensation? How do you compensate theft? Chair, if I were to break into your house and steal your flash, flash screen TV, would you pay me for returning it back to you? You won't, definitely, because you bought the TV. Now, let me put it to you in the politically correct context, as per the EFF. Because the EFF is the only politically relevant movement to the landless and dispossessed people of our country. That is why the land question is pillar number one of the non-negotiable, I repeat, non-negotiable cardinal pillars. We can't negotiate the land question. You know why? The land, it is the only commodity that is worth living for, that is worth working for, that is worth fighting for and that is worth dying for. Why? It is the only commodity that lasts. That is why these white people took the land first, before they did everything. Because they knew that the land provides dignity, it provides food security, it provides shelter. You agree, I can see you are nodding, thank you. Now. I'm worried about those politically confused black people in blue, who are supporting white privilege. Those poor black people in blue are landless like you, like me, like these politically correct red people. Now, go back to parliament, stop wasting our time. And allow the EFF using your majority to amend section twenty-five and bring back the dignity of your forefathers, which was stolen. Thank you very much.
And N'gosi Kamalam, Julius Mafani, Nyanaga C I C. N'gosi Kamalam, Ujulias, Mafani, Nyanaga C I C. In twenty eighteen, Nina, I know Nena Yenza, N'Zes submissions, but N'Zes change a title. It's a property land without compensation. Why are you, why are you here again because of the taxpayers? Because you are only mentioned in sentence. You are just sitting there. Since, since you are here again, we will make you to understand our thing. We will not cycle for less until you know what we are doing in South Africa. Section twenty five of the constitution must be amended, read as follows. Number one, the state, including parliament, executive and judiciary, carry on obligation to redress imbalances of the past through the enactment of laws will achieve the redress and equitably retribute all resources. Number two, properties may be provided without compensation and only on terms of law of general application or public purposes in the public interest. Remove section three and replace with, the state should be custodian of South Africa. Natural resources inclusive of land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualize the state custodianship of natural resources. Now allow me to say you something one. Do you see those people sitting there? They are lost. These sitting there, they are lost. Because allow this EFF government to rule this country. Murowalifati, Julius Lomalema, salute.
Eh, N'gosie Chairperson. Ika Malam, Dungusile, Waagakunene, Ward twenty four, Epa Falo City Municipality. For twenty eighteen, Berilapa, Sazenz submission zero, Sani Klaeluba Ambani, Niolungu Sa Umte, Kwenzepasukwazi, Expropriate Umshaba Wetu without compensation. Nipindena Buya, Kenek, Kibimali, Taxpayers. Sisacho Indwe, Nsiti Kuni. Section twenty five of the constitution must be amended as follows. Subsection three must be removed and replaced with the following. The state should be the custodian of South Africa's natural resources, inclusive of land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualize state custodianship of natural resources. N'gos, the land was estimated, some don't nyama.
Thank you very much. I'm going to take the second page. I'm looking this side. No, I'm not going to, I'm not going to take members of the provincial legislature. And because when this process is done, it's going to be taken to the National Council of Provinces, which will, which it will take it to provinces. That's where they will have the, their bite. This is for the members of the public generally. And I take it if you are seated here, you are in the non-speaking zone. So I'm not going to recognize anyone here. Let's start there. One, we are seated here. Oh, one. One. No, you introduced yourselves. One, we are Pambi. Two, three, four. We are five. Six. Seven, eight, nine, ten. Outside. Outside. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine. Ten. Can we, can we be ordered, please? I have not pointed you. I have not pointed you. You, I have not pointed you. Okay, you can proceed.
Eh, Ika Malam, Dingo Sia Bongakita, Ndipuma Ewatri, Ngosima Koma Branch. Eh, Mvakuam, Kulandela Bongo, Bandabaku, Bazegile, Basie P C M, Mna Gya, Antiboni, Ngamelu. Sibulibaseka, Ngakumbi, Mna, Kubalu, Umshlabi, Ndauti, Nbonu, Baké, Lomshaba, Sade, Souniku. Eh, Kutaala, Kigusenzekalulumchi, Omani, Kusizi, Wapakuti, Jenga, Ngoku, Nipindele, Neza. Sinefili, Nke, Yoba, You're not taking us serious. Eh, Ni, Chia, Imali, Eh, Zabakhafi. Eyo, Nando, Gesifu, Na Yotina, Kubba, Sibwisele, Umshaba Wetu, The Africans, Ngapahle, Kwenbu, Yegezo. Internet, I understand, Hio Iskakulu, Ilendialitaitiltit. N'Gela, Tresha, Sin Gonshua, Ayo, Sidutulua, Ayo, Ngaba, Be Lungu. San, Es, Critises, Taitiltit, Suku, Omshaba Wetu. And ya, Sibba, Sisaw, 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 Tata, Pisi, Kubo, Anbazna, Ba, Ba, Tata, Pisi. I, I, Si, Si, Funake, U, Section twenty four, Twenty five, A, Change. Amen, Ngolshobo, Pa, Ewkalini, Siti, Uchulmende, Si, EFF. Ma, Ibe, Nguye, O, Tata, O, Kandufa, Lo, Kuchincha, Lamiteto, Akdala, Ikoshla, Kele, Yose, Kishin. Akunise, Kukuba, Imiteto, Isifava, Song, Es, Si, Si, South Africans. Ze, Kukumkolulandela, Ayo, Ati, Umshaba, Izimbiwa, Namans, Ma, Otatwe, Ngapahle, Kwenbu, Yegezo. Ze, Aususe, Kilu, Umkolu, Uthwang, U, Section three, Subject to Correction. Eh, Uti, U, U, Ute, Ngolshobo, I, Minerals, Umshaba, Eh, Eh, Yonke, Londo, Ma, Ibe, Nguchulmende, Owenza, Inlela, Zo, Kuba, Awlaule, Ukwenzela, Usi, Pateka, Kuhlleso, Ke, Si, Fumane, Ngogulinga, Nayo. Asinfuni, U, Subsection seven, Agasinmetis. I, Africa, Ge, Yabandwa, Bamnyama. Kuba, Omnyama, U, Outhatinga, Andi, Mayamshaba, U, You joke to yourself, Nasibominbako, N'gos.
I'm Sia Bongalinda from the Makoma Branch. Behind me, I'm followed by all the people living with disability. Yes, you were here in twenty eighteen. We gave you a mandate that land must be expropriated and be given back to us. Unfortunately for me, I'm black. When that happens, I won't be able to witness it. And one other thing that is bothering me is this thing of the title deeds. When our land was expropriated in the barrel, with the barrel of a gun, there were no title deeds. There were no issue of title deeds at all. Where will we now have the title deeds to produce for the land when we claim back our lands? And this coming back for you here is just a wasting of time. So I repeat that section twenty five must be amended as follows. Section one, the state must carry the obligation of redressing the imbalances of the past, that is the cruel laws of the past that were perpetrated or used against us as black people. Subsection two, land, mineral resources and waters and everything in it must be expropriated without compensation and be given back to us as blacks. Subsection three must be removed and be replaced with a section that says the state should be the custodian of the land, the mineral resources and waters and the law, and that land must be shared among us equally. Subsection seven must be removed because it does not belong at all to us. Africa belongs to black people.
N'gosie Chair, Ika, Ma, Ma, Wetu, Ka, Mahati, Di, Kokele, Elkuzale, African National Congress, Linking. Chairperson, Masbulile, LaKulubani, Zile, Apo, Nizotata, If you Zitu, Nita, Te, Ina, Mango, Ye, Tuglum, Umshaba. Nita, Te, Ina, Mango, Zitu, Tuglendo, Umshaba, Chair. Chairperson, the land question is an important national imperative and it needs to be solved as a matter of ANC, Chair. The session of today is one of such so as to give you what is our view as the people of South Africa. We must tell the House Chair that our original mission as the ANC was to bring back the land after the nineteen thirteen Land Act. This is our objective, to bring back land to the people where it belongs to. Our forefather, the late Saul Plage, once wrote, "Awakening on Friday morning of the twenty June nineteen thirteen, the South African native found himself not actually a slave, but a pariah in the land of his birth." Today, we are here to redress that. We can't be slave in our own land. We need our land back. In the constitution, we want these following amendments. Section twenty five to remain as they are. That is, U, Clause one, four and five. On clause two, see Chair, we need, we submit that it should read as follows. Subject to, to without compensation or nil compensation under the compensation laid, conditions laid out in the law of general application, I submit. Thank you very much.
N'gosimshala, Ngapambi, Ngumswandi, Lagavai Boom. Eh, Olulunguli, African National Congress. Olulunguli, ANC, Apa, Eh, Khubusana, Glomas, Pala, Ke, Uthwa, Epa Falo City, Jenga, Kanzila. Eh, Ukufumela, Nogutasa, Utala, Ngakumbi, Pa, Yaa, Guisit, Begesa, Tete, Su, Kubanga, Nijonas. Kenkaya, Amakta, Isa, Guisinde, Be, Zirezi, Le, Boga, Nijonas, Wa, Ka, Ward thirty nine, Andi, Ne Speaker, Ka, Utheta, Ngukuma, Wetu, Mahati. Tisa, Utala, Nse, Kunda, O, Kenkaya, Amakta, Isa, Basi, Shile, Yo, Pa, Ku, Clause five, Clause eight. As ANC, we make the following amendment in the first line of the clause as follows. No provision of this section, including the payment of compensation, may impede the state from taking legislative and other measures to achieve land, water and related reform in order to redress the results of past racial discrimination, provided that any departure from the provision of this section is in accordance with the provision of section thirty six, subsection one. As ANC, expropriation of land is just a equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing the land question. This expropriation must be carried out by executing authority, which for the ANC is the executive. And only where there may be a dispute, which cannot be resolved, should be then referred to judiciary. Kunga, Linduado, Mas, Tata, Umshaba, Uwakune, Dispute, Kuya, Begens, Kuntreso, Umtesi, Frag, Umtesi, Tati, Su, Seko, To, Umshaba. Pa, Ku, Clause seven, we are making the following submission that for the purpose of this hearing, Etetang, Umshaba, we are saying the text remains as is, but the clause should be revisited as soon as possible in a later and separate phase of land. Si, Ngay, Kobi, Apo, Kuba, Iteta, Kakulu, Ka, Mapa, Ngomshabe, Wantwin, Esitima, Tallo, Yona, Yota, Itati, De, Ke, Bekta, Land, Separate for this because Kunga, Koko, Confusion. But si, Sachi, Kute, Is ANC, that needs to be revisited. I thank you.
N'gosie, Honorable Speaker of the Session. Eh, Kutozamile, Kanochetla. Regional Member, Dr. Khubusana, also a ward counselor here at Dr. Khu, Epa Falo City Metro. Chair, firstly, my preamble is just to thank you. Kuyaka, Tokuti, Nene, Nikokala, Eparamente, Ekokala, Ngumbu, Towa, Bandu, In, In Their Majority. Because what we have done, what we have done, Noba, Benizek, Asitoba, Aslong, Wonka, Ummyo, Some, Zanzafrika, Ayas, Land, Okunga, Because once, Katatwa, Iskiboa, Apa, Aksaiba, Kompya, Bapinata, Aina, Ben, Dinge, Ko, Kange, Dive. So, I salute you, Noba, Benizek, Iten. Chair, what we are submitting here as the African National Congress, this is submission from the grassroots because, Ta, Kupinten, Jenges, we consult the members down as branchy. Masale, Ba, Todd, Ba, Sanesito. What we are submitting here is not that, Eh, Eh, Indwe, Individual. Let me quickly go to this submission. Eh, Yesi, The My Colleagues, My Clubby, Tifunanjie, Okneta, Lapa, Ku, Section twenty five, we said, should, Zongala, one, four, five, six and nine should remain as it is. The Balagandia, Close three. Where compensation is payable, the amount of the compensation and the time and manner of payment must underline, must be just and equitable. Reflecting on equitable balance between the public interest and interest of those affected. Having regard to all relevant circumstances, including one, the current use of property, the history, the history of the acquisition and use of property, three, the market value of the property, four, the extent of direct state investment and subsidy in the acquisition and beneficial capital improvement of the property. And last, the purpose of the expropriation. Masia, Pa. The Commander, Pa, Ku, Clause eight. We make this submission. We make the following amendment in the first time of the clause as follows. No provision of this section, including the payment of compensation, may impair the state from taking legislation.
Thank you, your term is expired. Thank you. Eh, Chief, can make, can you change the page, one, the other? Eh, I think I'm the one who's sharing the meeting. And anyone else who wants to share can come decide. If you want to share the meeting, Unizela. The one come. Can you allow me to share the meeting?
N'gosie, Mpatinkobo. Ika Malam, Dingo Sabelo, Mkosana, Wa, Ka, Ward thirty three, Epa Falo City, Epumlaani. Silapake, Mpatinkobo, Singabemi, Be, Liliso, Lomzanzafrika, Sizobongoza, Kuni, Paramente, Si, City, Si, Kela, Kuba, Umshaba, Obu, Ye, Ngapahle, Kwenbu, Yegezo.
No one should take control of the land, of the people, without the people themselves. That's our submission.
My name is Sue Bentley and I live in Ward eighteen of Buffalo City.
Stay close to the mic.
Acknowledging the imbalances of the past and that land is a really burning issue in our country. I want to attest that an even bigger crisis in our country is the ever-growing numbers and the ever-increasing level of poverty. Judging by what has happened in Zimbabwe, and we have to learn from what happened in Zimbabwe, after land was... After land was expropriated, poverty levels increased, the currency lost value, unemployment became rampant, and people became increasingly hungry day by day. The influx of Zimbabweans who came into our country looking for a better life of the crisis that was happening in their country is indicative of the crisis of land expropriation without compensation. We cannot deny that disinvestment will happen in South Africa if Section twenty-five is amended. Disinvestment will cause job losses. Job losses will decrease the tax base. A decreased tax base will mean that there is less money available for social grants. There will be less money available for service delivery. There will be less money to redress the imbalances of the past. And our country will plunge into an ever-increasing poverty crisis. For so many South Africans, land is actually not their priority. The dignity of a job, a proper job, and being given the opportunity to earn money and lift themselves and their families out of poverty is what they so desperately want. A job is their priority, not necessarily owning a piece of land. Amending Section twenty-five will not give them that dignity. We have to learn from what has happened up north because we have no other country to escape to searching for a better life when in ten years' time we are in an absolute crisis.
Thank you. Chair, my name is Alungile Kamche. I am from Ward forty-seven, Buffalo City, representing the African National Congress. First of all, I wish to outline that inasmuch as the issue of the evil land dispossession in our country is an emotive matter in the country, it is wise that we do not heed to the rhetoric which is presented by the pseudo-ultra-leftists. At the very same time, we don't become numb, we don't become numb to the call presented by the DA which wants us to conserve the status quo. By so saying, Chair, we thank you so much that you came for another time to give us a platform so that we could share our views on this matter. This is in respect, and I wish to rephrase the sentiments of the longest-serving President of the African National Congress, Oliver Tambo, that in whatsoever that is done by leadership, the masses must understand so that they be able to follow. So you are so much doing this that you keep coming back and you are not acting impulsive on this matter, so much that the people of this country may be able to understand the process so that is owned by the people of this country. And as such, we want, once the land is been taken, because as the African National Congress, we believe that for a proper redress of the evil and the painful dispossession of land in nineteen thirteen, we want the land to be taken back. And we want an equitable process of distribution which will be as follows. That as the African National Congress will submit, that in Section twenty-five must be amended, though you leave subsection one, four, five, six, and nine. However, we wish to keep it that this equitable redistributive method must favor that the compensation should be payable at the amount of the compensation and the time and the manner of the payment must be just and equitable, reflecting an equitable balance between the public interest and the interests of those affected. And I wish to simply reiterate everything which has been said by my fellow comrades from the African National Congress, I submit, Chair.
Ma ndi zibuli sele. Ma ndi zibuli sele kule, kule parlamenta yolundi. Kebna ke, kandisasizandi ngote mngosi, o abana. Kulali ekutwa inwalane, kwa watse mngosi o abana. Eh, abana. Kulali ekutwa inwalane kwa watse thirty-nine. Eh, abantu ba chetile mndawetu. Eh, ba cheta indweane, si zaokita emini, si pinda pinda indweane. Kebna ke, ndifunange, oku feza, kogwendokwabana. Eh, iparlamenta yolundi, ilapaguti ngoku. Ndi zaokela, mneni ndobanatanga, asitai pinda isi ise, ise nempendulo, zetu singabashal bomzanzafrika, oko tanga. Okusmini, ndisa okutaza, mneni ndoyo buyakezo, lomshaba ebantuni, kubantu bao. Ngakangi bekandi opatelo, omsekele. Kui ndau, esesi opatelo, kutaza buyakezo, omshaba, imali, imasi, opatalwa imali, gokufutuso kwazo, kunendau, esingakange, esikole. Kwaimali, esinikwayo. Abantu bayasokola, kumshaba wabo. Esmini, indokukutaza, ndokwabana, izembiva, zelilizwe. Ma si, ma si tengiswe, ngabantu bazo. Ziga tengiswa, zeziko, okuchebe sana, si zotwa. Omshaba walapa, eh, South Africa, uchebile. Kotwa, tinabashalibala, eh, South Africa, si shupegile. Indwe enzwa, ndeze kayo, obunua nebelizwe, butengiswa ngapakwaluandi. Tinasi sheka, si dene, si shupega. Ezozin, ndisa, ndobanamase, nzeke, ngokaoleza, ngosi.
I am Temingosi Apana, from Ward thirty-nine. The people have spoken, and I don't want to repeat what has been repeatedly said. I can only say that I concur with what has been said. We hope that when you come back, you'll come back with the responses to our submissions or demands. Our land, minerals in our land should not be sold by other people other than the owners of the land. The owners of the land should have a say when the minerals have to be sold. Our land is very rich, but unfortunately, that wealth is not controlled by the people who are the owners of the land. Those are the things that we wish to, should happen, when we get back our land.
Section twenty-five, oh, property laws. Mulue, Malungu Parlament. The government of African National Congress has failed land reform. Now, under land reform, there are three pillars. That is, security of tenure, oh, tenure security. Two, land restitution. Three, land redistribution. Now I'll talk in terms of land redistribution. Di nemibuzo mitatu apa kui, kui land redistribution? Di ngai vuma, okanyesingai vuma? Di libelus kasban sugapi na, ukolue? Ukolue, ukolue, watsa? Kuto boys, kankri zalo, ika ya lukokobo loko bo? Ukumbuto oktwa intinga dabagandota? Eh, man kubeka? Di nemibuzo mitatu ngoku? Eh, di noti ndivume, eh, land expropriation without compensation, by no pendule? Okana? Ngopi lomshaba uzaku identifywa? That is the first question. Osmini, uzaku identifywa ngobaani, okanyengobaani? Ogusatu? Ngayi pilenzela, okanyele process isalandela, akubuiso omshaba? Di mili?
I'm Tupo Inzha from Kisaka Mahuk, from the organization called Intinga Dabagandota. I have three questions that I want to ask. If those questions can be responded to, then I'll support the motion on the table. The first question is, which land will be identified that needs to be expropriated? Number two, who is the person who is going to identify the land that need to be expropriated? Number three, what process will be followed in doing so?
Eh, ikamalam, ndingo Tombolundi, ndingo akazita.
Can we have order in the house?
Okay.
Can we have order?
Insu, insu ibanbagut?
Ikamalam, ndingo Tombolundi, ndingo akazita, ndingo asekisaka mahuk, panse kumbuto wenchukumo ekutwa intinga dabagandota? Eh, saf melana kwa ngo twenty-eighteen, ukubamshaba ma obuyakezwe, sacho ukutima obuyakezwe ebantuni bao. Ke ngoku, ke asizo fakasubmissions, bakwa kutala, asizo faki. Eh, tinake ngoku siti. Lomshaba ma ulau, lomshaba ngabantu bao. Iro, i resources zawa, ma si sekenzi swé, ngabantu abo bazo. Zinga, dipanse ko khulumente. Kubakaloku, sinetala le tendas, sinen kubakakaka yoma kolo ben, sinen kubakakaka ez ninzi, esitasa zpauli. Ka omshaba, unutbe panse ko khulumente. Tinasi ngabantu besi nduka loku, sina maluande, sina mans, sina matu, asizi ndoni. De alike ngoku, kubakola, mi tetomo, si wiso, ngkhulumente, ibanga, basina, sigeleli kuwo, sinelokala. Okunyeke ngoku siti, ma kujongwe, nyansweni customer law, ya bandu. And omshaba, esitengba, siktebisindoba, ma kujongwe kuwo, kulose esikuwo, sitinogo, ma kupumweke ngoku, ikonimishaba, ener reserve, kaya. Ukbanka banje, ukhulumente, angasenzela londo, kuna teka, nduzoguyakezo, kwalo, ulapaguti. Gobakusa, kubandwa, akafumaninezo, buyakezo zabo. Si chogeti na kesengumbutu.
I am Tombolundi Zeta from an organization called Intinga Dabagandota. In twenty-eighteen, we agreed that the land must be given back to its owners. Therefore, we are not going to make any submission, but people should take control of the land, not the government. Because if the government is in control of the land, you will see things like corruption. We are the owners of the land and the oceans as the traditional healers. In our process of doing our processes of healing, we need to access the land and even the oceans. But if the land is under the control of the government, we are denied those property, those rights or that access because we are told of the reserves. We are very much concerned about the land, that is called as the reserve areas. That is the one of the land that need to be expropriated and be given to the people. That is my point.
Thank you, Chair. Eh, I'm Kaborit Melso from Ward thirty-four, Kilpas Moiana Branch, here in PCMM. I'm a deputy chairperson there of the INS. Chair, the rightist attitude displayed by the dear speaker is disheartening and worrisome. To think that poverty is a separate matter in the matter that is not affected, emanating from landlessness is a joke and disrespect to us as black people. The land expropriation without compensation is a contentious issue that needs careful consideration and emotional intelligence. We are mindful of the catastrophe and loss of lives that happened in the past and would not want a repeat of the same kind. Cooperatively, we have seen the repercussions of land expropriation if not managed carefully. Our neighbors in Zimbabwe are a case study. Therefore, I submit and I want to reiterate what my fellow comrades have said. One, on clause two, we make the following amendment. Add a new subclause two C which must read as follows. Subject to without compensation or nil compensation under conditions laid out in Law of General Application. On clause three, we make the following amendment as the start of the clause which now reads as follows. Where compensation is payable, the amount of the compensation and the time and manner of payment must, must be just and equitable, reflecting an equitable balance between the public interest and the interests of those affected, having regard to all relevant circumstances, including, A, the current use of the property, B, the history of the acquisition and use of the property, C, the market value of the property, D, the extent of direct sale, sorry, the extent of direct state investment and subsidy in the acquisition and beneficial capital improvement of the property, and E, the purpose of the exploit, of the explo, appropriation. Expropriation of land without compensation is a tool to effect land reform and redistributive. Property excluded in the resolution. Section twenty-five two B provides for compensation which must be determined between two, between parties affected or decided or approved by a court. Subject to without current, current section twenty-five two B to be revised. Subject to without compensation or nil compensation as determined by the relevant authority and under conditions laid out in a law of general application. Affected parties may approach the courts for an appropriate relief. Section thirty-three of the Constitution provides a right to just administrative action. On clause seven, we make the following submission. Therefore, the purposes of these hearings, the text remains as is, but the clause should be revisited as soon as possible in a later and separate phase of the land reform process. On clause eight, we make the following amendment in the first line of the clause as follows. No provision of this section, including the payment of the compensation, may impede the state from taking legislative and other measures to achieve land, water, and related reform in order to redress. Thank you, Chair.
Ma ndibulise kumalungu, ndi yowisomtetu, yasemzanzafrika. Ika malamke, ndingomaskolé, ndingofakufani, ndisuka, kuela zigole mfuundo, ndesikale kosenyati. Esipansi, kwenila esitatu, kulumshaba, opanse kwe, sikale kosenyati. Ipshungu, indo basalbam, yokokuba, sikukle, sipingelela, sibu ya, sisi ti, ma kulungi iswe, kumkako siseko, wa semzanzafrika. Wisalshuko samashumabina neslanu. Imbi, indo esipansi kwayo, njenka ba fuundi. Ukuba, lenjo ibisenzeka, mgekungekuba, kutala sinuaba, ku ba, sifunenda yokhlala. Emshabeni, owachatwa, ngembalala kazi, kotatwa mkhulubetu. Singabantu ana, sifuna, okufumanimfuundo, kotwa, sia sokola, nganain ndoba, kufunaga clasifikascolweni, sikale silueli nda yokhlala, kulumshaba, wa uluelwe, ngotatwa mkhulubetu, mapalali kazi, kukwabantu, abati, ma kushalwe panse kotwa, bababulala, kunge nasini, otatabetu. Eh, ndifunage, ndiokuba, kutwe kapkalukhetu apa, sifunu kulungiisa, lomkako siseko, wa lomzanzafrika. Indo ke, esiza ngayo, siti. Umkako siseko, wa semzanzafrika, ma ulungi iswe, ngoba, auquazu, ukusi, usi, usi, ukusi kumasonge, sonneliseke. Omshaba, wa semzanzafrika, ma upathwe, ngakhulumente. Ukwenzelindogo, kuba wonke umtu, afumane, omshaba, ngokulingana. Kunga bikwa lenjo, yokokuba, simane sipataliswa, imali esunkulu, omshaba, one kazi, lotatwa mkhulubetu. Ngabantu aba fika belasheka, nganawe. Kaya nando sifunayo, ma lisuswe, elisunzana, li kulumthetu, lesikenga. Lipaleke, ngalenle. Omshaba, ma ulauwe, ngakhulumente. Ukwenzelindogo, kuba, abemi, bomzanzafrika, ba fumane, omshaba, ngokulingana, ngosi.
I'm Maspola Faku, from the Walters Asuli University. Eh, our issue is very painful that we have to come in, back time and again for the same issue, to repeat the same issue, that Section twenty-five must be amended. We as the student from the university that I refer to, we bury day in, day out only because we fight for accommodation. We don't have accommodation in the land of our forefathers who have been brutally killed for their land. Now, our land is full of the blood of our forefathers, but we, as they are offspring, we struggle to get even accommodation. We, we move that Section twenty-five must be amended and include everybody should have access to land because the way that section is now does exclude some of us, but it should be amended in a way that it should include everyone. That we also submit that the section, Section three, subsection three, must be removed and be replaced, that government should be in control and the custodian of the land and share the land among us equally.
Eh, ngosi, star. Ikamalam, ndingo Obundu, Mzileni, from Ward thirty-one, eh, Buffalo City Municipality. Eh, Chairperson, it's a fact that in twenty-eighteen, the parliament was here and the submissions were made by the people of the PCM in particular. The mandate was clear to say, go back and change the Constitution so that we can expropriate land without compensation. Now, the only conclusion that we can draw is that as you are crisscrossing the country again, partly in that process, you are wasting our time, you are wasting the money of the taxpayers. Eh, fighter, Chairperson, I need to tell you this. Asiti iki, asiti iki. Go back again and tell Matole Muzeka and the National Assembly as a whole that these are the same submissions that we give you, that we have previously gave you. One, change Section twenty-five of the Constitution and amend it as follows. The state, including the parliament, executive judiciary, should carry an obligation to redress the imbalances of the past through enactment of laws that will achieve, redress, and equitably redistribute all resources. Subsection two of Section twenty-five of the Constitution. Property may be expropriated without compensation only in terms of Law of General Application for a public purpose or in the public interest. Now, on subsection three, again, we are clear to say, replace that subsection. It should read as follows. The state should be the custodian of South Africa's natural resources, inclusive of land, mineral resources, and water, eh, and relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and conceptualize state custodianship of natural resources. Subsection seven should be done away with. That is what we are saying. Lastly, Chairperson, in this process that you are gauging on, we are saying it's good...
Your time has expired, thank you very much. Next speaker.
Oh, okay, eh. Yeah, you're right. Eh, thank you very much, eh, Chair. Eh, my name is Oskar Chamarr. Eh, I'm coming from a very small place called Kisaka Mahuk. Eh, fighters, eh, liberals, eh, and other people that are confused have spoken a lot about the issue of land. Eh, Chair, this thing of land is long overdue, we must agree. Eh, as a concern, several servant in front of you. I'm here for the homeless, landless people that are living there in Kisaka Mahuk. Eh, this thing of land, Chair, is long overdue. People are speaking about the land act that happened in nineteen thirteen, but this thing of land happened during even way back, eh, from the front year wars, starting from one up to seven. Eh, our chiefs, Oma Koma, fought fearlessly against this issue of land. Eh, there, there is a group of people who have alluded and said that, what are we going to do with the land? We know what to do with the land. Just bring back our land. We know what to do because we know what it means to have the land on our side. Eh, Chair, if you have said that the land is economy and economy is the land. Eh, I want to submit, Chair, to say that eh, the, the government must be the custodian of all the mineral resources in our land, but the people of South Africa must be very, very careful. We must ensure the land that is at the right hands for our people. Because eh, in this land, this land is naked, as we are, as we are sitting here, there are people that are coming from very, very far with these coronavirus and other issues. And we have not, we do not have the leadership. And we have not, we do not have the leadership that is protecting or ensuring security to our people. Eh, Chair, eh, I must say, Jengomnyutata bekewa teta up, that eh, there is a lot that we are having in this land. You'll find out we are linyu. And then, zonge those linyu ayu, let me make an example, we appeal. Tina is South African who received all by a third grade apple, but first grade...
Next speaker.
Speaker. Yes, for now. In front of you is George Oluwu from PCM.
Talk to the mic.
Okay. In front of you is George Oluwu from PCM, what twenty-four, from PCC. Eh, here I'm standing to raise the submission that was already done in twenty eighteen.
Can you talk to the mic, Chief?
I'm here to raise the issues that were already raised in twenty eighteen when parliament was here. But there were no resolutions. But I'm still going to submit. Section twenty-five must be amended and read as follows. Number one, the state parliament executive judiciary carry an obligatory readdress imbalances of the past through enactment of laws that will redress... Start, can I start? Okay. Section twenty-five constitution of must be amended, read as follows. Number one, the state, including parliament, executive, and judiciary carry an obligation to redress imbalances of the past by changing that, by... By changing the equitability of redistribution of land to be equal. Number two, I can't repeat number two, but I want to just go straight to number three to be amended and changed to replace the state should be called Oshiyashi.
Yabuli sentlini neska yebasa parliament ngopeleleyo. Mnake ndisuka paku maspala we ombaka Epafalo City metro. Tingu Nelson ngabantu agikama, tingu katula kistu. Ndipakuwa thirty, tililu ngle ANC, dikokelewi Alliance, ndikwe ZTV Comis Party. Indweni zaitetamna ngomshaba. Umlshaba kuneka kuyele zandwen zabemi belizwe. Owesibine andilinde langa amasela atikasfuna umshaba wetatmaspatale. Kotwa unasanga patale indo. Umlshaba gabani lomshaba wetu lindone finesipatale. Onai patele malini. Owasitatu. Ubutebi belizwe ma inga welile kolite nalitama ni epesa. Kaibuya kutwe irandi, ivelu yayo ipansikotwa lema lipuma welizwe.
I am Nelson Banjwa from what thirty, Epafalo City. The land must be expropriated and returned to its rightful owners without compensation. When we want land, we should not be expected to play, to pay by those thieves who stole the land. To who did they pay when they took over our land forcefully? So it's unfair that we said we should pay if we need to take the land. That is my input.
Eh, engosithlalu. Ikamalam, tingu lobabalo wakachoi. Eh, thlala ezwelicha, kawat twenty-five. Na amke thlalu ndizofana nesbika beskeza lapa ngapambili. Ezunu lutu kuba indoni, ebangelebanibelaapa. Kuba beske satibaana ngapambili, xitotale nyewe. Savumela indiokba usection twenty-five maka amenwe. Patke yata indoba, neyataan ukapaza na nemali yaba khafe. Eh, owesibini. Eh, to amend usection twenty-five, you need a two-third majority. Lo nditetukuti, umbuto peteayo, ubeno two-third majority since nineteen ninety-four. Patke ngokfika kwe EFF, utatwa kukoli ngaditatwa serias indaba yomshaba. EFF is submiteimoshinzambiini, so kuti eh, maka amenwe usection twenty-five kwe National Assembly. Eh, ditike thlala ngapambili, eh, usection twenty-five maka amenwe afundeke olshobo. Eh, umkol iskabasokala. Uhulumente unesbo pelelo, so kulungisa ukunga linganiswa kuangapambili. Ngokwenza imite tu ezwetilu ngselele, ukanga linganiswa kwenfeliso somshaba. Iskabasibini, umshaba izimbiwa amanzi ma wa... Ma wanikeselu kubantu. Oh, iskabasitatu. Kususwe umshatu wastatu afundeke olshobo. Umlshaba ma ubeanda state custodianship. Okwesine ma kususwe ikachana lomshatu wasten. Thlala pansikthlalu, eh, difunuku apila kunu mapulu amnyama. Beku fanelbanifundi lekumusimaimani. Umsegelongo. Onye beskanylaa, bateba ukpebutetabasixiya apa. Lo nditetukuti abasfileve pakatikwete. Abanamda ukshala naati. Indowebe isele ba itribile. Basiyana esefesi eti ey. Basu sabenza nina. Zenichonke lo ndo. Beku fanelbanifundi lekumusimaimani. Engos.
Chief.
I'm Lubabala Khui from what twenty-five, Zuelicha. I will repeat what has been said by the previous speakers, that you were here in twenty eighteen and we gave you a mandate that section twenty-five must be amended. And it's clear that you are just enjoying abusing the taxpayers' money. The ANC in nineteen ninety-four, they had a two-third majority in parliament. But it was only after EFF emerged in parliament or was in parliament that the issue of land was raised. They raised the land expropriation issue two times in parliament. And we as the EFF, we make the following submissions, that section twenty-five must be amended. Subsection one must read as follow. The state must carry the obligation of redressing the imbalances of the past by enacting laws that will achieve that redress. And subsection two, that land must be expropriated without compensation. Subsection three, the state must be the custodian of the land, the waters and the minerals, and that the land must be shared among us equally. And the last message that I have is to our fellow brothers on the DA, that they should have learned from the issue of musimaimani, that now the whites have made their input, they left because they have no interest to be among us. They live with the blacks as their face of the DA, whilst they have no interest in what we are doing here.
Eh, moluelamsha. Lono uteta apa. Eh, kuklenji Wellington Mzaza. Desalela apeskobe ilikoto ngundakulela pi enga khuni. Tokawati twenty-six. Eh, difweleka makabane kuti kantendova. Lembuyoka somshaba. Kuma Afrika akuti kubuya izwe lukokobetu. Ngoba, amapulu makabane dia wazida yasenekzenezelo. Difweleka kulu because ngandoni lomshaba kuyoka somshaba wetu. Imisabenza isa, ochosikuasuku yaza obabakona banda abano kreshpesa. Boglima makabane, esichela etango yefama pa. Esafama zinabantu, zingana baantu jumshaba ulele. Neme mka baantu abesabenza phalamshaba. So ndakala uhulumente kaskanga nalele. Eh, makabane tijodisela pinizi chonga. Apa konaga makabane kanchongleyo mna. Eh, si sanga Afrika, si abantu amnyama. Si zabrazili sauma apa. So patkoto ngbonutikube kaya kakushle. Na zifem zilela makabane, siafudi sabantu ana baantu abetushlenabo. Kapasa bani mapasa idjoka, matrekzabo. Patukoto ba fuda imisabenza, basixa sishleni nabema kai. So ganza ukala keku, ususu apagleni nditetamanbana zukala. Uhulumente makamakala zemsinyane limisabasa ifuna, si zaku isabenza isa, si zaku zupushle iso. And then, nia zifem kala ngapa matimbaza, ukuya foshexin. Esafem fleka zamil ma zivulo makabane. Tijonisalentisa mipchungu. Koba tijona batabesabenuka weste imanwa pegama bonu kalimisabenza. Kamisabenza zefu chosa zifem, uhulumente makasamikwe. Engos.
I'm Wellington Mzaza from what thirty-six. I was happy when I heard that the issue of bringing back our land was raised. We should get our land back. We know how to work on and till or cultivate the land. There are a lot of farmers that have been deserted, which can be of great use if they can be given to us. If we can be given an opportunity to work on them, we can prove them into proper use. We have educated our children, but they are unemployed. We wish that you give us our land back so that we can put those farms into proper use. And there were firms in Timbaza as well as Foshexin, which are deserted, are just standing there like white elephants. If that can be given to us, you can put it into proper use.
Thank you. I'm looking at my time. I think I can take about six hands.
Kasa tata wambatanda chungu.
One, Pya. Ah, not you. This, this hand was long up. Yes, Chief. Now, right to. Anyone from here? Ah, not, I've not pointed you. Go back. There, somewhere there. There two of you. Let's take you. I pointed you. I pointed that one there. Where, no, I, at the back. Yes, come. Alases.
My name is Wusisi Wenkoinki. I'm from PCM. I'm residing in what twenty-seven. Eh, for purposes of not rehearsing what has already been said here by previous speakers, I want to approach this debate from a development planning or a spatial planning perspective. Eh, I want to motivate for the expropriation of land without compensation for purposes of spatial justice and acceleration of service delivery, particularly in our urban areas. Eh, we've got acts in place such as the spluma of twenty thirteen, which has the aim to promote spatial justice, equitable access to land, and equitable distribution to land for those who were previously denied this rights. But eh, the spluma aims to also prevent the inequitable practice, practices when it comes to land, to spatial planning. An example of inequitable, inequitable practice is the retention of privately owned land for speculative purposes. A speculative purpose is the retention of land by people who are not currently using it, who have no plans to use it, but who are just keeping it for maybe eventualities and don't want to release it to the state so that it can assist the previously disadvantaged people. This land is also, the malicious thing about this practice is that...
Can we give audience to the speaker?
Is that this land is also withheld from property markets, meaning that government cannot buy this land from the private owners, meaning that for service delivery purposes or for social and economic inclusion of the previously disadvantaged sections of the population. These vacant spaces that are unused by these private owners, they end up being a burden on the state, both socially and economically, because they end up being hotspots for crime and violence, particularly violence that is of agenda-based nature. How many times have you heard on your radio, read in the newspapers, or watched on your TV that a woman has been kidnapped, taken to these empty plots, violated, and murdered? So this becomes a, 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 this imposes an economic and social cost to the government, to the government of this country while these spaces only serve the interests of those who are given this land, the eighty-seven percent of the arable land of this country, that was dispossessed from the black majority of this country.
Your time has expired. Next speaker.
Eh, than, thanks Chair. Chair, my name is Wusumzi. Eh, I come from Zuelicha, eh, what forty-one, Kayama Petra Brunch. Chair, eh, mine is very short. I just want us to note these things. That before umshaba ukutwe, uluelewe, wakuseluwa, kwakritaka likazi labanwabamnyama. Kumpazu zilitoba, eziluelepe zomshaba, wa makaleka namachahabi. Kwelkala lasikibu. Kwezomphazu zonke, abantu abamnyama aba ukuselu umshaba wabo. Kangutwe nje voluntarily. Ikaze litritakeleyo, litritakeleya banbaku tibe lule. That's the first thing that we must note. Now, I'm very shocked when the Democratic Alliance comes here and speaks about colonialism and apartheid in their own interpretation. Because to us, colonialism, imperialism was not just a system, but it was a brutal system that took away our own dignity and our own identity. Now, we are shocked that the Democratic Alliance would stand firm and speak of apartheid. Now, the black people in general, and Africans in particular, must be careful of this narrative that the DA is bringing forward. That's the first thing that I want us to note. But the second thing that I want us to note, Chair, is that young people generally, in all the spectrums of political parties, they are agreeing that we must expropriate without compensation for the benefit of the poor and the working class, the marginalized and the oppressed, the motive forces of the national democratic revolution. That's the firm stance of the African National Congress. That's the firm stance of young people of South Africa because they understand the historical evolution and the nature of dispossession that we had in South Africa. I think, Chair, if we would speak along those lines, we would agree that let's amend the constitution. Let's amend the constitution for the benefit of the majority of people of South Africa, which is black people in general and Africans in particular. Thanks, Chair.
Okay. Eh, thanks Chair. Eh, Veronica Bossman from what seventeen, Mtenzana, Epafalo City. Veronica Bossman. Mtenzana what seventeen? Eh, Che, okokaala maniti. Eh, Benila Apango 2018 Party, Niti. Okuzakuenu apa kutimshabi ingabi lilo ilize. Ndischiwani siti ke kandisicho. Eh, engos, ngoba kukwena bukweze ndobana, sishale kosi nikumboza. Xamangamanyama tashakukonukuliba lenkile. So, ibaleklenize siso pino siso lukumboza. Si siti si semikulanda osasi mikuyo. Apa asiteli ndoyamtu apa. Apa asimoleki ndoyamtu apa. Apa sifunubu isela okwetu. Siso ucho glenda uche. Apa che lomshaba sitetaongo, sitetangaowo. Ngo, kumshabo ngo oba omkulu meyutulu. Msaba lowo unendo yonge oba obeutwe babepila kuyo ngawa. Lili fileyutu eli esali xieruayo. Ngoba obeutu. Ka wa fika abantu. Aba begina faluka bana. Ungondo zabana abamnyama bazibulele zafafi. Kandi tinasi luchume lo labo bandubanjalo babula lingo ndoyabo. Baba nika iri nginezi ngizi ndo okubaba felebup tropo. Pati na usimile siti umshaba wetu masubu isela kunjalonge. Abazaga ba utenga kuti ba utata, so now to sifunubuye free. Eh, on clause eight, we make the following amendment in the first line of the clause as follows. No provision of this section, including the payment of the compensation, may impede the state from taking legislative and other measures to achieve land, water and related reform in order to redress the results of the past discrimination, provided that any departure from the provisions of this section in accordance with the provisions of the section thirty-six. In conclusion, expropriation of the land is just an equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing the land question. The expropriation must be carried out by executive authority, which was the ANC, is the executive, and only where there may be a dispute which cannot be resolved.
Your time has expired, thank you very much.
Omolweni. Ikamalam, ikamalam, ndigusi abulela akapui. Ndipuma ku Wat 49, apa Epafalo City. Eh, okokaala, eh, before sitete ngoba i onasalomshaba azikola apa kulendu. I think the question ukala okufune kasi buzile is that who naturalized abandwa abamshaba pe apia Afrika?
Uh, Chief, you talk to the, addressing us, not the...
Okay, okay, okay. But what I guess, subasensitive, subasensitive, nabobatalele, londo le. Eh, mlandi zo supporta i amendment of section twenty-five of the constitution. And ndifuna ndobana umshaba wililizwe. Eh, amashad, izilwange, izimbiwa, na kokoonge ongapesulu na ngapansi apa kulomshaba. Eh, onarishue system for equally disparate, for ulwabelwano ngugu, ngugu linganaayo. Lastly, before ndisubmit ndisalipansi, onarilpulchira, you are properly welcomed in the Bafalo City.
I'm Seabulela Pue from Wat 49, Bafalo City. Before we say that the owners of the land are not here, who naturalized the white people in this country?
Next speaker, I'm running out of time. There are no, there's nothing called replacement in this meeting. I appoint you, you don't replace. So if you, if you are here as a replacement, you must go back to where you're sitting. Because I'm not taking replacement. I've noted that, Che, it's him who must come and speak. Continue.
Uh, thank, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Che. Firstly, I must applaud you, Mr. Che, together with your panel. By being here this moment, it's a proof that you are the government of the order. Secondly, we should not allow fiye to be a standing block in the development of our country. When we talk of the amendment of the constitution, we, we, this is not, this is not the first step. We are continuing. This is the continuity of the, of the revolution that have already started. So we are saying, the constitution, let us allow the constitution to be amended. Eswa inju ikula, nenngakizayo sia kula. Pati ngoba indoyo ukalek nengasiyenzile, ukususa. Le clause iteta necompensation we, we constitution. Now, kenkogusizo kuas because, akonama kamesswa sebezi sa, I supported the position ye ANC. Malungana lontaba le, le land, ah, le land amen, le land ule constitution, le amendment of the constitution. But itilendolena, this is the process. But it's not yet a, it's not a complete process. Si ani tiinki ndobana nipinda nibuwye now. But today, sitambaani, konoi chichi constitution. Nferu koba ni chichi li constitution. Nize because there are some other issues. Apa konama kamamakulasegeswe apa, within apa kulelandukle contest ye ye ye, yale proposaliyenzwe. Like ikameli final no judicial review. Like nadoze powers esibekwae kui executive. These are the issues ekufnegasizilandukile, sisi konstarishile. Another point, i point eighty. Siaya, siyankela, siyazamgeela ifus, is a minority. As, as why we are living in kui multiparty, we have multiparty system of it democrats. But now, it kenkogulendolena, today siya fumela nasonge abasichili status nisaba pangwacho. Pati ngoba ambani konoi chichi constitution. We are expecting you back, nizo akonda, konsebezi sentwenzi, engos.
Engos, engos, mshalanga pambi. Ikamalam, ndigofezile kamejoo. Eh, unopala was Wat 46, APCM M. Eh, manbulie lestalonga pambi, ndango nange ospete ngeskala sensei. What you are doing today, you are showing exactly, ndoka nyaganyenza yo klaparlament. Eh, yo buli shavanda batumbabalikunswana. When you are coming to the public, yeah, you must come read it, chief, next time. When you are coming to the, you cannot just promise us that you are going to take hands and then you are dropping it down to six. Le timer ya kumshamboga nyabaleka ya penobnese pitams, I don't know. Kabanya abaleka kabanya atot. Eh, tinasi EFF, we are not going to entertain lomchigalezo nwenza yo apa. Eh, sinikalela ngongo 2018, kobe nila apa. Suchisfuna umshaba obu isela kubana kazba ongapanse kwenbe yeges. Ndo kuespini, sifuna izimbiwa, nezikamo ezpumemshabeni, zilauulu ngabemi babeshe South Africa, ne Africa yonge chigalele. Ez, ndoyo kubana ezizindose pumemshabeni. Apa ndabaza bazoko uselizindawangazazi yo apa. Mduwaskale ndoyo kubana we have to pay in order to get back our land. We never ever made any codes. Oka nyazanga suchensana mshaba kubuti. Because they cannot even tell us bakawakwimalini ngwabe utatu mshaba. Eh, enyindoke mshalanga pambi le ebendi funukwikunsekis. Ndo yobana kanea ambay, neambay no submita ngumeyi. Nezenebatalele ndoyo kubana tinapepesem skribile. Ute tanane skribile, uta tanane parlament. Nduesifuna yongo kui implementation, engos.
Kaula, kaula. Kaula, ngazizwe. Viva ensi, viva! Viva ensi, viva! Jaja. Ndo ye, eh, ndo ye kajaja, jaja.
Hello. Thank you. You can sit down now. You can sit. Nukasala apanso ge. Thank you very much. Thank you. Seabulela. Seabulela. Can we get... Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We... I think we, we have started off, we have started off very well, so. Singai moj. Singai moj. Singai moj. Nfunawuti, nfunawuti ngaleskathles. Alaskathles, before ngivala, nginigesa iway forward yoki var. Nfunuknigesa u, ukomretrone uchanbonge. Uzasho nangendleniz pati nga yokso shoyena minangso yivala nji hisammarize. Na aketukulu, komretrone.
Cheperson, advocate, honorable advocate, Baba Bongo, and the entire Ado Committee up front here, thank you for this opportunity. But I think, Cheperson, this must be, I'm going to pass a vote of thanks. This one must be corrected. Eh, the leaders of political parties must take care of their own situation. Because the world is watching. And we can't turn ourselves unnecessary into a moker given this opportunity. No one will take you serious if we continue in manner like this. In any case, Cheperson, let me take this opportunity to say, eh, indeed, it has been a marathon. More than three hours of sitting, of contributing, also recordings. Very important time. And on behalf of the Parliament of the Republic of South Africa, on behalf of this all-important Ado Committee tasked with such a mammoth task, amendment of section twenty-five of the Constitution of the Republic of South Africa, let me say thank you very much to everyone of you. You have indeed heeded the call. When you were summoned and called, you came en masse. You have given us your contributions. We have recorded them in print and electronically. We can surely assure you that whatever single and piece of word uttered here will never fall down. We are going to process all those things. And when this process has come to its logical conclusion, parliament will come back to you and report to you the ultimate product. You can be rest assured. Maybe, as I conclude, let me say thank you to the fragmentation of our political parties up front there. Thank you so much for making it a point that your people come here. You have done a splendid and enormous job which very few people can do. Thank you very much to the members of parliament, the staff from parliament, the security personnel, and every single part of you who made it to come here. Thank you and thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. Now, I've said this before, these members that are here are members of parliament. This is a multi-party delegation. So as the members are here, the Speaker of Parliament has appointed this committee considering all the parties that are represented in parliament. Because we are a multi-party democracy that respect the constitution. Every single voice in parliament, however small it is, it must be heard. But the majority must be able to give the direction. I hear Honorable Kalipi says, the majority must prevail. Now, in parliament, this amendment of this section is in the chapter two of our constitution. It's in the Bill of Rights. For it to be amended, it needs what we call a two-thirds majority of members of parliament. So out of all the parties that are in parliament, the ANC has majority, but it does not have the two-thirds majority. What does it mean? It means passing this legislation will need a cooperation of other parties that are in parliament so that we are able to pass this legislation. This legislation is the most important legislation in the history of this country. That is why I've appealed to all of you to listen to one another, to be disciplined. Because the history that you are making today, it will be there for many, many generations to come. So, we are going to be taking this process back to parliament. Parliament has published a draft bill which its closing date was the twenty-ninth of February for written submissions. This process that we are engaged in is in terms of the legislation. The lifespan of the committee is up until the end of May. It is important that you understand this process because it's a legislative process. And you've got to follow it to the latter. When we are done at national assembly with this process, this process will be taken to the National Council of Provinces. The National Council of Provinces may still want to do public participation. It's a requirement from the constitution. So if, singa konukbega zele, enukbega zele la the process, we may multiply our own efforts by zero by doing this process. So I'm appealing to all of you that as we engage, tomorrow we are going to EBI. As we engage with this process, let us be tolerant to one another. Let us make sure that we treat this process in a dignified way that it deserves. Because you all know that despite the fact that we are twenty-five years in government, but the majority of the people are still not in charge of the land. But we are not going to deal with that land by coming here and throwing insults and throwing in windows. It's not going to assist us. You must come here and propose a draft. That this is how I want it to be drafted. But I must say that I'm very happy with majority of you who have came here and said, remove this section, put this section, this will assist. Because we want a solution that will benefit majority of our people at the end of this process. So let's continue to engage, continue to watch parliament because we're going to be debating this matter very fiercely before we submit at the, at the end of the day. So those of you who say, don't come back and so on, take note that the National Council of Provinces may still come because our parliament is constituted into two houses, National Assembly and the National Council of Provinces. So the National Council of Provinces will have to exhaust its own processes before we get this thing. Once they are done, that draft bill will be sent to the President of the Republic for the final signature. Then other processes will unfold. So with those words, I want to say to you, thank you very much. This meeting is officially closed. Thank you very much.